Hey, it is now seven oh three AM on Thursday, July twentieth. Sorry, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual school board meeting, and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. So maybe you'll write.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Senator Jenny has confirmation and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? I'll move to approve the agenda. On favor. Uh, so welcoming our visitors, better principals and Mr. Ingle online. It's like Mrs. Kelly's getting connected and his ever Jenny Bramble. Otherwise, that's everybody that's on here today. So welcome, teachers. So item number two on our agenda is organization of the board for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we have two elected board members who must take an oath. Incoming school board members may wish to review the oath, so Sonia and Rhonda. This oath is referenced in North Dakota Century Code forty-four oh one oh five and is written within the North Dakota Constitution, Article eleven, paragraph four. So Shannon, Business Manager Shannon Jefferson will do the oath process with the new. Okay, all of them do, okay?
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the school board of Oaks.
Of the office of member of the school board of Oaks.
Oaks Public Schools District forty-one.
Public Schools District forty-one.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome, Board Member Sid, and welcome back, Board Member Nabel. And I guess I should just say that Board Member Heimbach was gonna try and hop on, but he was in family emergency, so. We think we're the very best and our family the very best. If one must serve to me. So under item two B is election of officers, so I would like to call for the nomination for the president of the school boards for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Sonia, ready to go another year? That's all, though.
Second.
All second. Okay. We do discussion. Okay, well then, let's just, I better do a roll call, huh? Or does it have to be a roll call? I wanna, I wanna know.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach, oh, absent. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes.
Okay, that, I hand it over to the president of the school board, who will now decide over the meeting.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you for supporting me for president. I am willing to do this for one more year, but remember, this is yet. No, not because he's yet, this will be twelve years since, you know. Um, so I will now entertain nominations for the office of Vice President. Current Vice President is Monica Heimbach. And she never had to, no. Um, one year Carla Holcher was the Vice President, and I was down at a junior high football game. And I was about two minutes late, I think she called me. Nominations for Vice Presidents. I know she's not here, but I'm gonna nominate Monica. Monica Heimbach has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we will vote on, uh, for Monica Heimbach as Vice President.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Heimbach absent. Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, the motion passes. It, it's like reading scripture in church. If you don't know how to pronounce it, just be confident, because nobody else.
You got that right.
Oh, they're beating.
Alright, so my understanding is that you're wanting us to act on each of these items, one through thirteen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Separately, or is there a group of them that we are going to do together or are all in?
I think we better know them all individual, just because for the record, and they have printed into the stage.
Okay, very good, then. So our next item on the agenda is board appointments, designations, and authorizations, of which there are thirteen. Some of them may involve a little bit of discussion. Uh, and in your board documents that Anna has provided to us, she has made her recommendations. So I'll try to say what those are. And I'll be seeking a motion and a second for each of them. We'll have an opportunity for discussion, and then we will have a quick roll call. So the first one is the federal program representative. Mrs. Self recommends appointing her, the superintendent, as our federal program representative. Is there a motion for that? How many motions? Day moves, is there a second? Sayer seconds. Any discussion? Can you just briefly tell us what the federal programs represent?
So that would be, um, the person that is in charge or is the contact person, or whatever. Shannon and I work together on a lot of federal programs, but it's like Title One, Title Two, Title Four, Title Five, those monies. Um, it probably would be at the Office of Civil Rights, you know, it's just any of those federal programs, but we oversee that, that writing grants, the, the, like that, so.
Okay, very good. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Hello, roll call them.
Alright. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Uh, Heimbach absent, Sonia Miel.
Yes. Uh, motion passes four to zero. Next is five oh four, section five oh four coordinator, why don't you give us?
Okay, so we do have children that, um, have what is called the five oh four, it's a protective piece that is written, a plan. Um, it, it has to deal with kids that have a disability of some kind, maybe short term, long term. But it actually, five oh fours cover a child from, or a person from birth to death. So let's say you're deaf, and you are working out in the workplace, um, they possibly could have to, um, do some kind of accommodation for you, but this is just protection, kids like that. So Jamie will oversee the five oh fours in the elementary and the high school, even though Ed will be probably the administrator of the five oh fours in the high school, but Jamie will oversee it. She's been doing it the last few years, so she's got quite a bit of knowledge in that area.
Okay, so Mrs. Self recommends our elementary counselor, Jamie Franks, be designated as our section five oh four coordinator. Um, I'm seeking a motion for that. Nabel moves that, is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Um, and that, that is different than from an IVP.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the next one.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Monica Heimbach's absent, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next is eighty-eight coordinator.
So that's the IEPs, and we just kinda split it up between the two counselors. Hopefully, we never need to access that, but, um, he is IEP coordinator, we'd like him.
And this would be his first year in that role.
Right, dude. I don't know if he did it last year or not. We may have probably designated him, I guess what I'm thinking. Yeah, we did, now that I think about it, yeah.
Okay, so with that, Superintendent Self recommends Edward Wentworth to be our ADA coordinator. Is there a motion? How big one? Day moves, is there a second? Sayer seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Heimbach absent, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Uh, next is our Title Nine Coordinator.
So I know probably most of you have heard about Title Nine equality in sports, but it's a lot more than that. Now, it has to do with central harassment, all of that, it encompasses, it's a big umbrella. Hopefully, we never have to go down here. We have training during the year that our teachers all have to have, so Shannon and I work together to oversee those pieces, make sure our meeting happens.
Is there a motion to accept Superintendent Self's recommendation to appoint her, our superintendent, as our Title Nine Coordinator? So, Nabel moves, is there a second? Sayer seconds. Any discussion? I would just note, at the last, uh, I was at the last School Board Association Convention, and there was a Title Nine, um, present, kind of a keynote, not a keynote, but a, a, a session for the entire convention. And I wasn't really paying that much attention to my schedule, and when the gal got up and said, "Well, I'm gonna talk for the next ninety minutes on Title Nine," I, I laughed. I thought she was joking. She talked for ninety minutes, and it was amazing, all of the things she talked about. These two were there, and there was a lot, a lot of stuff, and a lot of new, new things, that lots of things were changing, and it's a big, big task, much more than counting the number of sports, yeah, for each gender. So with that, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach is absent, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. And next, Mrs. Self recommends appointing her, our superintendent, as our civil rights compliance officer. Do you know what you do for that?
Yeah, that one that you, you wanna avoid also for that, because if you're not following the rules of the ones up above, they're probably gonna come knocking on your door. So we, we wanna avoid that one, but.
We're giving out all these fun jobs. You ever thought being superintendent was easy? No, you don't. Okay, so with that, I am seeking a motion to accept Mrs. Self's recommendation as herself, our superintendent, as our civil rights compliance officer. Is there a motion? The day moves, is there a second? Nabel seconds. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, none, please call the roll.
Uh, Day.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Sayer.
Yes.
Heimbach's absent, Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Uh, one more for Mrs. Self, she recommends that we appoint her as the representative, as our representative to the Cheyenne Valley Special Ed Unit Board.
So the board is made up of all the superintendents of the schools that belong to.
It, it is all superintendents, because once, many years, well, several years ago, um, someone who was in education at that time suggested to me that there should be some parents, teachers on that.
Yeah, it's a super. At every meeting, they have their teacher's rep that comes to the meeting, so they're very involved.
How many schools are there?
Um, there's Valley City, Barnes County, us, Maple Valley, and Hope Page, so five schools.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to appoint Anna Self as our Cheyenne Valley Special Ed Unit Board Representative? Go ahead, Brian, people. Uh, is there a second? Uh, Day seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Heimbach's absent, Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. As our CTC board member, like the Cheyenne Valley Special Ed, we are members of the Southeast region Tech Center. Um, we appoint one member to that board. There are, I don't know, eleven, twelve schools on that board. Late, um, and I was on that board, I think, for four years. It's a good board, it's an interesting board. Sheila's been on it for, probably, I think, four and four, yeah. So, um, I, I would entertain nominations for that board. Sheila, are you?
I'm fine, if you have somebody else.
Is there a nomination for as our CTC board?
Sheila Miel.
Okay, um, or how about a, yeah, a motion, a point, yes, that's what I'm looking for, a motion to appoint Day moves and Sayer seconds. Is there any discussion? I would note that it's so spread out that they do offer the, uh, typically, do they still just have, they have, you can meet in person at Wapperton, in person in Oaks, and then they join together, and some, if you can't make it, it's either one. So, yeah, through your own, their own school, it's not Zoom, it's through.
Yeah, the only time we use Zoom is if we're all along.
Okay. Um, alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Uh, Heimbach's absent, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next is to appoint one board member to Dickey County JDA Board. I've been on that board for five years or so. Uh, we didn't just meet this week. Um, the, kind of the, the gist is that the, the county JDA Board gets, um, a mill levy and get funding from taxpayers and a budget from the county commission to support economic development in our town. And so we give, we, we approve loans and grants to businesses and individuals, try to spur development and keep our, um, keep our communities healthy, so that we can attract. Well, it, it's a job development authority, and I keep telling them, we have jobs, but jobs aren't jobs until we have people that are in them. It's people that we're seeking, not just to fill the job, but to live in our communities and bring their kids to our schools, to keep our tax base up, in order to help us continue to fund the education that we have. So, I am willing to continue on that board. We, we rotate, it used to almost always be the ranch house. Well, um, I suggest. Well, yeah, we, I think we're going there next time, but we've met the last two times in Ellendale. Um, met on Monday evening at the New American Legion, which isn't quite finished yet, but, uh, we had made a very nice grant and loan to them in May, to support that project, and we met there. Which I like meeting in places where we have, we invest, yeah, our money, we met, um, um, met at Growing Small Towns, we met, we've met at the bowling alley in, uh, Ellendale. There is place. So I'll entertain a motion for, uh, an appointment to the Dickey County JDA. Um, for making motions. Um, Nabel moves to appoint Sonia Miel to the Dickey County JDA Board, is there a second? Uh, Sayer seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Uh, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Heimbach's absent, Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, the motion passes four to zero. Alright, so now we, in our packet, there was, our next item is board committee assignments. Oh, I didn't get my packet. No, I have the packet, I just have to open the right file.
I'm sure I got that one.
Fun page. Oh, okay. Um, alright, so the following are the recommendations of board members to be seated on these committees. Technology Committee currently is Sheila Nagel. Um, no change in that recommendation. Negotiations Committee. Um, is a standing, these are standing committees. Currently, that is Sheila and myself, and I'm gonna recommend that we leave that for now, but, um, this committee typically is active once a year in non-negotiated negotiations, that is in the spring, to, um, review administrative and classified compensation, and make recommendations to the board. Um, because I'll be going off the board, I feel like I would like to appoint someone else. Um, I'm thinking of Monica, because she's got payroll and human resources and benefits knowledge, but I'm not going to, I think, I can do that at any, but I want. If anyone else is really interested in it, uh, with.
They're usually lining up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I would also note that we discussed changing our, um, negotiations protocol, or the way we do it, to explore in what's called collaborative negotiations, that might make it, might make it in the long run easier, more effective, but it, the change is always a challenge, so it's like, like everything, it might be messy as we move into it, but.
Kinda added that to the agenda for tonight, and then I reached out to the teachers that they, that actually wanna go, if so.
Alright, um, the Wellness Committee were required by policy. Are we required by law to have that committee? I think we are.
I probably, I, it's great, not, yeah.
Um, and our board rep on the Wellness Committee has been Rhonda. And that's what I'm recommending to continue. Facilities has been, uh, Robert Thorpe and Monica. Um, Brian, I think, is well-equipped to serve on that committee, so I'm recommending to be there. Leadership and professional learning, almost a professional development.
Yeah.
Um, I'm serving on that board. Anybody else would like to take my place, that's fine, too. Um, not a real.
Not much I can do.
No. Curriculum, which is, I think, a very important committee, uh, Monica and Brian, uh, Brian would be replacing Rhonda on that, or not Rhonda, Robert, um, on that committee. And the other two that are listed in our packet are sick leave, which are only active when you can. Those are my recommendations, as outlined in the packet. And as I said, I'd like to, um, consider making a change to the negotiation committee that we got later. Is there a motion related to the board committee assignments? Nabel moves to accept the recommendations of board committee assignments. Is there a second? Sayer seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Monica Heimbach's absent, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next, uh, we need to authorize Oaks Public School to join the North Dakota High School Activities Association. Is there such a motion? Nabel moves to authorize Oaks Public School to join North Dakota High School Activities Association. Is there a second? Second. Um, Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, although it's in the common judgment, call the roll, please.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach's absent. Um, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next item is to designate our official newspaper. Is there a motion related to that? I'm guessing, well, I think so. The move, uh, Nabel moves to designate the Oaks Times as our official newspaper. Is there a second? Second. Day seconds, and so every other year, I think we have to vote on the public ballots, uh, during the school board election, whether or not to publish our minutes in our official news. I don't know what else the, the official. What else, what else does those meetings, meeting minutes for the special meetings and regularly, yeah, meeting minutes? We, we also use them to publish for bids and obviously for, for advertising, but, um, and I, I believe, are we required to designate an official newspaper?
Well, I, I think we are, and, um, Tyler Hanson is, kind of was just taking his lead on it, and he did, I think, better to be safe than sorry that we didn't do it, and, you know.
We've all, yeah, we always have. You know, and sometimes things change, you know, we, we can, it may be that we were required by law, and now, oh, we're not anymore on some things, and and, or we may be required to do some things that we weren't.
Right, that very well could be.
Just not, just, don't just go by last year. Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica's absent, Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Um, next item on the agenda is to designate Starion Bank, uh, or designate financial institution for depository funds, and we have now, and have, as long as I've been on the board, have designated Starion Bank, Bank North, and First Community Credit Union. Is there a motion related to our designated financial institutions for depository funds? How many motion? Um, a day moves to designate Starion Bank North and First Community Credit Union as depositories for our funds. Is there a second? Sayer seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach's absent, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonia Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next is to set the regular more board meeting dates, time, and place. We have, um, in recent years, been meeting seven AM on the second Tuesday. It has seemed to work well for our board members. When I first got on the board, we were meeting in the evenings, or we'd meet sometimes at noon, or we'd meet at five o'clock, and, um, you know, most board members have kids, and kids are in activities, and who wants to miss their kids' activities for school, but, so that's when we went to seven AM, and it's worked well. Um, I'm flexible with days and times of the week.
We have to do Tuesdays.
No, you do not.
It's not the best for me, but.
Any other day?
Any other day. Right, yeah, I can make Tuesdays work, but it's easier. That's amazing, yeah.
Friday.
That's up to you guys. Um, I, I just, in the package, it said, I, your, I know your request was Thursday or, or Friday, um, I don't think it really, it doesn't matter to me, Fridays are, I, too, we have Fridays, we have off school, but I guess we can make some adjustments on that.
Right, it, it's a regular designated day, but in, we always look ahead and say, oh, whoa, that's not gonna work, somebody, but. There are only five of us, so it's, it, like, you're, you're, because us are CTC board, there are, you know. So, um, are we gonna try for later in the month? Well, yeah, that was what we discussed during our school board training, that instead of trying, you know, it, when we get to the consent agenda, I think the idea was, everything on the consent agenda should be sent out by two weeks before the meeting. So the bills and the financial reports and, um, all the, you know, the, the administrative reports.
So we have time to review it.
We should review, um, and then send in questions, and if there's something we wanna pull off of that consent agenda, then we've got plenty of time for the meeting, so, uh, should we consider the third, either Thursday or Friday?
Some of those months are going to be hit and miss, like, I'm looking at September fifteenth is the third Friday, well, I'm, I'm gonna need more than one day to do all that, if you're gonna get it two weeks in advance, so there's, I mean, it's gonna be October, that's the third, that's the twentieth, so I, yeah.
Yeah, November, if it's a Thursday or Friday, we, they sometimes run. Yeah, November, if it's a Thursday or Friday, we may sometimes run. Thanksgiving, yeah. Sure, but that not this year, that there, Thursday, Friday is sixteen seventeen.
So do you want to go the third Friday at seven AM?
I can make whatever work. Okay, so I'm feeling like we have a consensus around the third Friday. Um so is there a motion to set the third Friday at seven AM? As our regular meeting, and I will have to have an an exception already in August, because we have to meet before August tenth. Approve our our budget, but it could be a special. And if this isn't working, change it.
At the central.
We started in September then? The third Friday?
How about let's set it, and then we'll 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 make the exception as needed for August, when we get to the, I was setting against meeting. And we may, we may find we need to have two meetings in August with all the financial one, so is there a motion um to set? Our uh regular meetings date and day and time as the third Friday of each month at seven AM. In the central conference.
I'll make a motion to. Of our monthly meeting, third Friday at seven AM.
Sire moves, is there a second? Sorry, uh day seconds. Hope that's okay with Monica. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Heimbux absent, Brian Sire. Sonny Meele.
Yes, the motion passes four to zero. As we went through these, I thought of um. In the past, we have at some point approved. I don't think it was joining the School Boards Association, but um contracting with them for the policy. And it may be that we haven't gotten the bill, or we, you know, you can do that in the future, but I I think having policy services is extremely valuable.
Actually, Shannon does have a bill, and we, I dug into it, and I didn't see anywhere where the, you guys have to approve it. But you do have to sign this contract with them, so she just has to be first for you to sign.
Okay.
Alright, but I I didn't see anything on there, and we didn't approve it last year, so when we just.
Yeah, I'm. I think we have in the past.
I totally tell you how many times the pay against them, and I need to get the bill you approved. But they take care of, they maintain our website, they do all of the posting, they. I think there'll be more updates this year just because of the legislation, the changes that are coming through already that we're dealing with, so.
Okay, um what is the bill?
It is two hundred and fifty dollars for the twenty-three, twenty-four policy services. Basic subscription, and it's seven hundred dollars for the policy service maintenance of the web hosting. So I'm assuming that's where they keep our stuff posted online, so the total bill is nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then they are also our resource. I mean, she can't give us legal advice on specifics, but I can call her and ask her questions based on policy. And they'll help us out, so.
But in addition to that, we pay dues to the association, correct, something else. But this is policy services, and you've seen policy, Eve, I'm sure, but did our policy, and it's. It's complex and it's legal and some districts let their policy. Lapse, and then they go through it every fifth year, and it's a horrible, horrible job to get back up to speed, and some districts never do. They just, they just don't, and it's it's bad for, so we're gonna, I would like to turn it, but it's. Uh I I don't think it's necessary for the board to. If anybody has any objections, speak up. Alright, we'll move then to the board consent agenda. According to our guidance here with uh from Anna. There are, um alright, anything in red, um do you even have a copy of the?
No.
Okay, so. Anything that's in red on the agenda, there is uh corresponding documents in the packet to. For supporting documentation. Anything that's in blue, uh typically, there's going to be something coming out. Before the meeting, it's just not ready yet. If it's in black, it's just for discussion, or. Anna, I really liked this guidance document that, and I like that, but step by step, so here. The consent agenda are items that we're just going to act on with little or no discussion. And you receive them in advance, and it's um. Non-controversial, you had an opportunity to ask questions. And we would act on them in one single motion. However. Items A and B are minutes, and those are for approval. The rest of them, uh superintendent's report, bills. Now, your guidance says items C.
I'm sorry, did I do it wrong?
I think it's that should say.
C through D. Oh, I'm sorry, C through D.
Are um items that we accept. The difference being approving is we're approving, this is actually. What happened, and we're accepting reports. That are, that, yes, we got them, that doesn't mean we approve every little thing that she's done, but she's within her authority to do it. Curious though about the bills, are we to approve those or just accept?
I think we're supposed to approve them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're, we're wanting to approve items A and B and D.
Okay. Sorry, my bad, I got those switched around.
Okay, yeah. And just the reports, the superintendents and the business managers' reports are for acceptance.
Okay, I'll make sure that we.
That's okay. Um I had just, I I would just say that on on these items, on the the special board meeting minutes, when. Uh and and uh Shannon did send out a revised copy. One thing I noticed was that um. One of them gentlemen with ICS, his name was misspelled, and I I specifically noticed it, because I had. Looked at his name tag, or it was up on the screen, I'm like, whoa, how do you say that? And she had spelled it phonetically around it, and how it really was, and I should like.
You look for those.
And um and then I questioned Shannon. Um because she had listed out every single line item and the dollar in it, knowing that these are. You know, it's meant to be published in the paper. I wanna be transparent, but also knowing that. The ICS represented that, you know, you just can't add all these up, because there's a lot of redundancy in there. Do, should we, or should we consider not printing every single line item? Um Shannon added the words estimated or. It's something, uh approximate or something, and a second version of this minutes that she sent out.
I highlighted and bolded, they have outlined possible facilities projects by location.
And so. Once we approve these minutes, this is how the minutes will be, I'll sign them, they'll be going into the. Oak's Times for publication, and this is what's going to show up, and I'm fine with it, I just. That was just a question I brought to Shannon's attention, I don't know, but it's fine. That's the way we want to approve them, then. Um that's the way we'll, we'll be proven published, and it's, it's very transparent.
It's also very scary.
Yes. So with that, um. I seek a motion um to approve items A, B, D, E, and F. And to accept items C and G, the business manager's report. And we could, you know, we won't have a lot of discussion, but um. We can have some discussion if anybody has questions on those. Nagel makes the motion on the consent agenda. Is there a second? Sire seconds. Alright, were there any um items? That anybody had questions on, or that are your, Shannon, or Anna would like to highlight from their reports?
Just um hopefully you were able to read the reports, because later on, this is gonna come up with the fees, because. Um Mr. Engel made some suggestions or from our technology meeting about um changes in insurance, and then. Jeri made, well, Jeri didn't have one, that was a couple months ago, but um uh Robin made. Suggestions for changes in our fees for athletics and. Things like that, so that'll come up later, just in case if he needs to refer back to this, but one thing I do wanna point out. Okay, I don't have it in my report, but those two guys sitting over there, the high school and elementary principal, you know, the two guys that work here with us. They are here, they are not on contract right now with this, but I'm telling you, they have been here just about every day. Great indoor, and we're here all day yesterday, they're here today, they're they're working outside, they're they're just fantastic, and without them, with their dedication to us. We we we'd be in trouble, and we would be starting the year behind the eight ball, but they are on top of things, and you know, we've been having trouble staffing. We've been working on that, they're working outside of hours, they answer emails, they're constantly giving stuff for us, so. They're uh very much appreciated and very precious as far as how we option here as a school, so thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Brady.
Okay, any, any questions or?
There is, thanks, babe, for always being here. I just have some things I'd like to add, because I had this, my business report was done. Um oh, July fifth, it says here. So I applied for the clean, the clean air grant. Um I did all the paperwork yesterday, so that should be here before the end of the month. We got the maximum of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um Dallas from Western Agency was here last week. Um our square footage on all of our properties was accurate. Um the. Um building cost per square foot was low, but it. He said we, at this point in time, in like every year, we could reevaluate it, and it's gonna be low. But we are going to reassess that. I did write out the check yesterday and brought it to Western Agency, because it's. We're due here in the next couple of days, but there will be an increase simply because of the square footage costs to replace some of the buildings. Um we went through and in some of the the properties on the on the deck sheet. Uh Anna and I had looked at, or we didn't, you know, just the description of them, or like, what, a high tunnel at the center.
Oh, I have no idea what a high tunnel is.
I, where I thought it was the tunnel between two buildings, I'm like, why wouldn't that be? So it was a good experience to go through, we 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 visited the the press box. We um, they're getting a quote to add the. Uh football or the sign, the ergotron or the sign out of the football field, that's not insured by anybody. Um he's going to read or find out how much two marquee signs at the center here are. You know, what's the cost, and and we'll go through with that.
You know, there's Starion sign out there as well, Starion traffic field sign that I assume now belongs to us, it's not digital, but it's a.
Is that the one on the, it would be the east side on the?
Well, there's that, the that one and the one on the highway.
Oh, okay. I think he did, we did notice the one there, there's two signs, I'll make sure I email him, make sure there's two signs there. Um we also noted when we went through the the vehicles, I had to add the new bus that we just received. Um our football trailer, the Bravo trailer, um. And finished shirt, so I put that on there. Um, so I'm just kinda holding off and waiting to see.
That made me think, is there, is there provisions that says, and we cover anything that you forgot to put on? Sometimes they say, well, anything you buy or rent, and you know, I you faithfully try to report things when I get them, but.
Right.
If something is missed, are we okay? Because that might not be the only thing.
Right, yep. Well, we have the three million dollar liability, did he put that on there? I don't know if. Like an error or admission is on it, but. Um the other thing, when we were out at the track, um it was kind of a ticket shock to me, because I told him, I said, we just built a new track. Couple thousand, couple years ago, and it was free, you know, and just a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So he's, he, you know, I I don't know. Where the threshold is on on ensuring it or not, he's making a quote on it, you know, the worst case would be. Uh tornado would come by and pretty much, you know, uplift the track, or trees, or cars, or buildings go across it, and it's damaged. Um he's working on a quote to to see, I, he had, he hit me a a nest bit or anything, so that's one thing that we'll be coming to see. If that's. Something we want to entertain and uh and how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah, does the trailer have to be insured? Because I always thought that if it's being pulled, the whole vehicle insures it.
For the liability, I believe, but if the trailer is sitting somewhere and the tree falls on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because I asked him the same thing, because we was out at the shop, or when we were at the bus garage, which was a good, because I'd never walked into bus garage either. So we went in there, he wanted to know what kind of floor it was, ceiling, and. And so I asked him, I said, I'm assuming since it has to be titled, and and I have to buy the tax every year, it. He was, oh, yes, this needs to be. Sure, so we did, it is on there now.
It should be very, very inexpensive in my.
It was twenty-five dollars.
So, but it's.
But it's insured, yeah.
But if 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 the bus is pulling it, and the bus and the trailer have an accident, and it's not insured, then it's it's not insured for that. If if it causes a liability, if the power unit, I believe, is carries the liability, because it can't really do anything, but.
So um I I think I had included in my business manager report, uh these, our association dues to this North Carolina School Board Association. Uh and that's, I don't recall how much that was, I think it was just over seven thousand fifteen bills, I think it's just over seven thousand dollars for the. Um school year's dues to belong to the School Board Association. And the new bus was nine hundred, I believe, thirty-seven dollars to insure the school bus. I got that insured here, I paid that yesterday also.
Alright, the old one was taken.
It has not yet been. I just got, yesterday, I, Dave sent me the pictures, because he had to dismantle again, drill a hole in the engine block. And cut a bunch of things, so I said, well, until that actually is done.
And that bus is a nineteen ninety-something bus that's being disabled.
Yes.
So now our entire fleet will be invisible.
Have to take goals, yeah. Yes. So, and then the other thing, Dickie Coney, um Tom Clarity did send us, or did send Anna and I um. The new taxable value um for the. Land that is within Dickie Coney's or Oak'sville School District. And then I reached out to the board, and uh. There, this hasn't been finalized, but it did go up also, um is is, I mean, it's an estimate, but it's gone up, so if those two were up, I have. At least some numbers to kind of play with for that.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or highlights, I will um. Call, um well, I'll just take a place vote. On the consent agenda, there's a motion and a second to approve and accept. The items on the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and the opposed say no. Motion passes, now we get to really. Um regular meeting, committee meeting and reports of facilities, A, chiller update with action.
Okay, so I I know Brian has more information, and Monica's not here, but um I I. The the, in the board packet, my recommendations, I I, they could have changed, that was before I had left, but. Here's what I saw as our options, is we can fix the chiller, and the approximate cost of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Buy a new chiller, the last cost estimate for the unit without it was available, was four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Find a temporary solution by renting a unit or buying a used unit, and I know that Dave, Brian, Lori, and Bob were in discussions about that, so I'll let. Uh Brian, talk to you about that, or option four is wait to address the chiller um in a larger future facilities project. But I, you're gonna need to make a, I think we need to make a decision. But I, you're gonna need to make a, I think we need to make a decision on this moving forward because we're already in July, right, and moving forward, if we decide. You wanna go to a bigger project, I have talked to Lori and they'll be here tonight to discuss more of that, maybe you wanna put. That conversation off later, I don't know, as far as if we would do some kind of a project. We would have to start the motions and moving, you know, and they think, um, that they could do. Okay, this is just a guess, summer twenty twenty-five is when they can start with. So, between now and then, if you do a bigger project, but maybe I'll just let. Brian, he was kinda have to start on the facilities committee already.
Okay, so what do you have, whatever your thoughts?
Okay, so I called a place for renting, you can rent a chiller. For nine thousand dollars and plus then you get a payment of it shipped in and then have somebody come and set it all up. Um, call the place in texts and they buy used chillers. They bring them into their facility and they go through them a hundred percent, they hook them up, they run a video of it operating. And then they send all the information. I have talked to the guy three times on the cell phone and I have emailed him twice. He just solo on equipment, but he's never emailed me that. So a chiller to sit out here would be approximately eighty thousand dollars. And at eighty thousand dollars, then it would probably chew up that a hundred and eleven thousand dollars by the time you're this. Brought shipped here, booked up and running. But with that being said, you could probably get by five to ten years for sure, so. We were to buy a used one that's operational, no warranty. Probably a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars, get us by for five to ten years until we decided, you know, if we're gonna put together a. Big future plan. And then. At the end of that, we would still have. A piece of equipment that we could resell. And the gentleman that I was talking to said, when they buy them back, they buy them back at about thirty cents on the down. So we would still have a little bit left. For to, you know, to resell them back.
Back up, when you said renting a chiller for nine thousand dollars a month plus transport and setup.
Yeah.
Is that what you said you thought would come out to eighty grand?
No, the eighty grand would be to buy a, uh, basically a rebuilt chiller.
And then if we were to rent at nine thousand dollars a month, plus transportation and setup.
Right.
Would we keep it in the spring and pay all along or?
I don't, yeah, I don't know, that was through United Rentals and that guy got back to me as quick as everybody else does, not very fast. Because they don't have anything right now to rent. I'm assuming if it sat here, we would probably still be paying nine thousand dollars. Cuz it would have to come out of Minneapolis, you know, so I'm guessing they ship them all over the US.
And if, if we want it again in the spring, it doesn't still make sense to, okay, we only need it for September and August, September, October, and then.
Right, right, and all that stuff. I guess my suggestion, I would like to have Chiller Systems out of Fargo come down. And look at the children we have now and get a second opinion on that instead of this company out of Minneapolis. And then see, see what their suggestion would be or what their price would be to maybe get this one back up and running. For a couple of years until we were able to move forward with a larger project. I would say the summer of twenty twenty-five would definitely be the right timeframe before we started anything, would just be a matter of. Getting to that point with something.
So if we rebuild the existing, is there sort of warranty that?
No, no.
So.
So if you fix the old one, there's no warranty, if you buy a rebuilt one, there's no warranty. If you rent one, there's no warranty. And to move forward to buy a new one. I don't, I don't know that that would be a good. Idea right now because you would want to have an engineering firm come in to size it according to what we would do down the road. And that would be part of the large. My suggestion, first suggestion would be is to have this company out of Fargo. Um, I talked to a few people that know these guys at Chiller Systems in Fargo. And even if it costs us a thousand dollars, they'll come down and give us a quote and we'll go to get this old one up and running, just to get us by for a couple of years.
So the current quote from the folks out of Minneapolis is a hundred and eleven thousand?
Yeah, I think that just. At, hey. I think that's terrible, I think that's a terrible line, and I think they were seeing a hundred dollars, that's my, your my thoughts.
Do you have any indication of how quickly Chiller Systems of Fargo can get here?
No, I I didn't even, I I have not talked, if I didn't want to talk to anybody else until they.
Well, you mentioned possibly revisiting that, this topic this evening and. I'm not opposed to that, but it's a special meeting and it's a retreat and historically, we do not take action. But, um, but. But that's, I I, I don't want to take action, you know, if we could. Throughout today, even get in touch with this company and might go, oh yeah, we can have somebody down there Monday to look at. Or, oh gosh, no, we wouldn't be there till the fifteenth October, that might make a difference in that.
Absolutely.
Thoughts, and what did you say, a rebuilt one?
Eighty thousand, that was just, that was just for the unit, so.
Oh, right, it did have other stuff too, it plus.
That a hundred and eleven thousand dollars is ready to shoot up like right now.
A rebuilt one and that's just the rebuilt chiller that doesn't assess, that doesn't hit our electronics that runs and chillers, right?
Uh. Wait. Get it explained a little bit.
I don't know.
So this would be just, just setting, setting a whole new chiller or a rebuilt chiller, just setting it on the ground outside of the mechanical room. And then having a pipe cutter come in and run the plumbing to it, have an electrician wire it and then just let it run.
Okay, because wasn't it my understanding when Bob was here last time that the electronic system had failed last fall and. By the. Act of God, there was some old. Mechanical.
That little, like computer.
Circle, yeah.
Oh, in the mechanical room, yeah.
Yeah, and and that was just. Phones and put in there, so we could still, there, it, the chiller could be replaced and the electronics could still go off the next day.
Right.
Okay, yep, okay.
But the electronics that are even kept or number ones that are just running through the classrooms, right, and then talking to the chiller?
Just in that, and the and the boiler too, you know, when they.
Yeah, yeah.
Boiler, just for that though.
Yes.
I I don't. I I don't think that there would be anything wrong with calling them, right, cuz where 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 else are we gonna go, right, so let's say they say. Okay, we'll come down and they have the same cost, I think we're in the same place that we're not going to be able to fix it.
Right.
And and so we just move forward and then, um.
But then we get a second opinion, somebody that's.
Right.
What local were, you know?
Okay, so. I I think we should follow that and get in touch with them, what, let's, let's say, what, what are our thoughts? If in fact they say, oh, it's gonna be even more than a hundred and eleven thousand. What, what would we do then?
I think then we need to. I think, well, I think our only next option is try to find a used chiller.
So, you're, your, your limited information is they're not very available.
No, it wouldn't be this fall.
And a new chiller for four hundred and sixty thousand.
That, that's a ridiculous number also.
Maybe, maybe Fargo Chillers has a number on that as well.
Maybe, yeah, maybe they have. Maybe they could be the answer to a lot of this, also.
Cuz a new chiller then would come with a warranty and could get us by for a period of, as you said. Five years.
Right.
Us, and then we would have an item that would have resale value.
Yes, so when I was talking to this guy at a text, he said that when he rebuilds them. And he ships them out at between seventy to eighty thousand dollars, he's at fifty cents on the dollar. So, telling me that a new chiller is less than two hundred thousand dollars for what we need.
I think.
So the four hundred, sorry, the four hundred and some thousand dollars I think is. That's just a bad number.
But is that all in with, you know, removal and disposal of the old one?
That was, that was. Sitting wherever it is.
Bob. Commented to me with, if we're taking a DeLorean and putting it in our Chevy, it's heated.
Yeah, we don't need nothing like that.
But that's the only thing they had available on the floor, so that's what they were, you know?
Right, which, yeah, supply and demand, so that makes it a huge price though.
So worst case scenario, we have no chiller for this fall. Um, and we have hot classrooms and hot gyms and that's what we'll be dealing with, I'm not. Saying we can't deal with it, but that's, that's the worst case scenario.
So we might have to be a little bit uncomfortable till we get some.
I just don't see us getting it this fall, you Brian, unless they fix it.
No, unless Chiller Systems can fix it at Fargo, I I don't perceive their condition this fall, and it's.
So maybe as we move forward, we're just gonna have to make some more decisions further on, but for right now. Is your direction to, if Brian will help us, we can talk to Chiller.
Yep, I I think so, and we can have more discussion on it this evening, if we should, if we think we're ready to make some action, I guess we can decide to make action. Or we could, we could call a special meeting. After meeting or whatever, to make, to make that action, if it's. If it's unnecessary, so, so no action to be taken at this time directing administration along with Brian to get more information from. Fargo Chillers?
Chiller.
Okay. Okay, good work. Um, item B, science floor updates.
Uh, so the committee meeting minutes are in there, so those are just for your information, but. Um, I just got confirmation yesterday from Ryan that they're gonna do the punch list, I I believe on the seventh, they were gonna try to set that up, so they. I believe they're gonna start doing painting, I saw him bringing in dude's basket, so. And, you know, you, uh, there was just this time period where every day you saw this huge amount of work being done and now it's. Slowing down, but I mean, it's little things that we're working on, you know, um, the floor is ready, it's prepped. The third floor is ready to have the flooring laid, I I just talked to him the other day and painting, you know, so we're at those finishing practices, but. Ready to do the punch lists on the seventh, so. That was amazing and I talked to him and I just said, I totally appreciate, I mean, I haven't run into any problems with them, they've been professional. They've done their jobs, um, they've been here, so. Kinda nice, refreshing, you know?
Some are relieved, some contractors aren't that way, are they?
No, and knock on wood, I think our, yeah, our contingency should remain pretty much fully intact, which is like. That's good to save that money for.
Okay, was this real wood?
I know, yeah.
Yeah, good news, and so then, uh, the cost update, Shannon, included, the contract price was six eighty-two, six hundred, does that include? The the one change order that?
No.
Okay, so that's about plus twenty thousand sixteen?
It was twelve hundred dollars for the change order.
Oh, that was it?
Oh, yeah, I was.
I was thinking it was sixteen hu- sixteen thousand for the, uh, quote that we opted not to.
Yeah, yeah, they originally, they originally had it a much larger dollar figure, but because of the. The size of the wood or the depth of the wood, they were able to just use part of it and they used the rest of what they had ordered on another construction site, so. Yeah.
So a little bit more than six hundred and eighty thousand is probably our final cost and we have, the the contingency wasn't eighteen?
Yeah, just running twenty, right?
Well, it's always nice to have those kind of expectations in the.
The hundred year old building isn't really letting us down.
Okay, any other questions then about science floor projects, cost update, there's no action needed, but. This information. Alright, school policy review and possible action, can you lead us through this?
Yeah, so, um, Board Member Sire is an activity and substitute bus driver. Um, and he has done some stuff with us in the past as far as contracted work, which I think you had. Yeah, I asked for that information, but I think for right now, we should just, if you look at policy B, A, A, it takes two thirds of the. More board excluding the, um, employee board member, who's that can get some trouble, no, it depends on who's here for the forum, right, without on it here. We would be.
Well, we'll have three, that's still a form.
Okay. Hi, so I think what I'm suggesting is that you just approve his continued employment as a bus driver. And let's say later on in the future, if we need Brian to do some work for us and some contract, if we can meet later on and prove that on a case by case basis. Does that?
Yes, I did ask Shannon and share with me what had been paid to him in the past three or four years and. He's been paid to, um. Do the chain gang of football, pri- privately, and so I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, just for historical, um, as as far as the bus driving and activities, I personally have no problem with that. I would certainly want him to continue to be, to do that and that Phil Roney did the same when he was on the board and we'll. We we need it, we need it and it's not a conflict, we we just so seldom even vote on anything related to. Bus driver compensation, it's it's once a year and at that time, I I think Board Member Sire could remain. Either abstain or remain, uh, keep his board member head on. Uh, and then with regard to his business sire appliance, um, from back from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. Um, Shannon was able to find, uh, multiple projects totaling thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, sewer repairs and drain, at the track and bathroom repairs in the, uh, elementary. But nothing since twenty twenty-one, so, um, I agree, let's just, uh, let's take action. On the bus driving position and whatever comes up in the future.
Do you wanna, should we amend that, um, uh, motion to just be bus driver and activity? Um. Or I don't know, what, how, what would we call that?
Um.
Do you wanna add it in there, you think, or does that?
I think that's so nominal.
Okay, let's, let's just do it as a bus driver.
When is mileage for rumble on the red, you, did you drive kids in your personal vehicle?
No, it's just during the bus.
It might have been, that's what it said in the description, but I, it might have been for heavy buildup gas or diesel on the, on the bus. If you get the driver, but it, that's what it read, I am just popping based through mileage.
Yeah, I I, I think the chain gang thing is so huge and it's, um, it's not something the board approved, you just.
Okay.
Um, I would entertain then a motion as outlined in Superintendent Self's guidance with regard to. Employment of Board Member Brian Sire and I would, um, ask that Sire abstain from this.
Yes.
Now, okay, I'm going to approve a continued employment of Board Member Brian Sire as a bus driver, that's cool, yes. Uh, Nagel moves, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Dave's second, is there any discussion?
Just jump right in there.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the motion in record.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Uh, Brian Sire, Sains, Ron De Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck's absence, Sonny Neal.
Yes, motion passes three to zero with an absent and Sire abstain. I would note, I think it was in our packet of, up above where it said officers of the board, that the, the board president is allowed to make. And second motions, so I, I haven't been, Mr. President, I'm jumping in there, so.
Right, made one or two in my.
I I have, trying to avoid it. Um, financial business, pledge of assets, did you send us something on that?
She just sent that yesterday, right?
Oh, no, I I don't think, is it in our pack?
I thought I sent them last week.
No, it's not in the packet, I sent it last week in an email. Well, anyway, um, I don't remember seeing it, but, oh, that doesn't mean I didn't get it. Sometimes she shares things with me and more than she thought she was yesterday, so been last week. Do we have it on paper or no?
Yeah, I have it, I, I.
I don't wanna copy it, just wanna make sure.
Brian, what do you think?
Whatever you suggest.
It's a fairly routine motion. We need to do this. But in July, December.
Yeah.
Um, so, um. Oh, the transfer of monies was transfer of monies is on it too.
Label that the.
Given to, it was two emails from Shannon, almost back to back.
What day was that?
I'm looking for it.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw it too, but I cannot find it now. It was Monday.
No.
Tuesday.
Ten nineteen and ten one one.
Oh, there they are, board meeting number three, cuz I wanted to, yep. Okay, so I'm just gonna resend this then.
Oh, yeah.
There it is.
Got it. Where am I, where am I gonna find it? Cuz I wanna know.
It was on Monday. I sent it at ten nineteen on Monday, uh, July twenty.
The heading is more agenda EF business one A B. What day did you send it?
Monday. Monday, July seventeen.
Oh, I do have these. Okay. Um, fudge report, uh, Zarian FCCU and Bank North, um. Is there a motion to approve the pledge of assets report as presented? I moved that. Is there a second?
Second.
A day seconds. Is there any discussion? There any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes. I hope that was okay, that was, that was a voice vote. On the transfer of funds, I am going to ask for a real. Okay, so does everyone have in front of you the transfer of funds list?
You're explaining others.
It's Derek. Um, we'll let Shannon do this.
Motion of the transfer of money.
It's right. For Brian and for the public.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, explain.
So the, the first, the first one I'll talk about is, um, the hot lunch fund. So our hot lunch fund operated in the negative this year and the amount of fifty five thousand three hundred twenty six dollars. And sixty one cents. That's your quote tells us we cannot. Um, start July one, the new fiscal year in the negative. So we have to transfer money from the general fund to the hot lunch fund and that. That fifty five thousand three hundred twenty six dollars makes it two zero.
And that's a loss just for one year.
Correct. Actually, it's a little bit higher because we started the year off in the positive about six or seven thousand dollars. And so instead of carrying that carryover to six or seven, I just brought it to zero if you wanna transfer more.
So, so when I saw that yesterday, uh, and I, I shared that. I went back to my earlier years on the board and the, the historical was from, what did I say? From like. Twenty thousand to sixty six thousand. So this is not out of, this is not out of the ordinary. But then we went through two years from. We, people didn't have to pay for lunches and everything was such like. So, um.
So is this normal from the district, district?
I think it, I had talked to our prior business manager and he had said that. Yes. Some of the schools like Valley City, Jamestown, Wapperton, that. Group or that size seems to be able to stay in the positive. He said, he's under the understanding that. The big ones, you know, Argyle, Ismark, they do not operate in the black either. Um, and I had provided some information from other school districts that they, they are in the black. But they also pay their hot lunch staff through the general fund, so that. I would really think that really means they operate in the black. Um, but a lot of the smaller schools around us, yes, they are, they operate in the.
So how much of that fifty five thousand salary?
Um, I'm not sure what you're, I mean, I mean, oh, how much was the whole wages?
Yeah.
Um. It's in one of these.
Feel free to join.
All right, so, um. The, for the year, our salaries are eighty thousand dollars. Eighty thousand five hundred dollars for the cooks. We had dishwashers for just to tick over twenty thousand. And we had our clerk at just almost twenty one thousand. That's just salary growth wages. We also have then, um, the benefits, which would be. Nine. Twenty. Thirty two, thirty five, thirty seven thousand dollars of benefits maybe. Um, on the budget or on the expenditure and revenue report. Um, we had budgeted a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars for food and we came in at a hundred and forty seven. And then fresh foods and vegetables, it was kinda off the opposite. We budgeted seventeen thousand and we had spent twenty eight thousand. But we were still under budget by twenty thousand dollars.
So this makes me think about, in this last winter during the legislative session, when there was this, all this uproar about, well. State should pay and schools should pay for the top, for all the kids' hot lunch and legislators were criticized for not. Voting for paying for the hot lunches and, you know, knowing what I know. Well, people that can pay for their hot lunch are paying for their hot lunch and those that aren't paying, the schools are already paying for it. We're already paying for it.
Now, with the legislative changes this year, anybody that applies for free and reduced lunch that falls within two hundred percent of the national poverty. Is gonna be free lunches. So if the same people applied last year that applied, uh, last year that will apply this year. Anybody that was free and reduced last year will now be free. So then we'll get reimbursed for them, part of it by the state, part of it by the federal. It's getting people to apply. Problematic.
Because districts have that same.
Absolutely, yes. And it, and the school totally benefits from it because obviously their bills are paid, but honestly. We don't really find that those are the families that don't pay their bills. Those are the people that come in and pay and they'll make payments. It's people that would not qualify that are not paying their bills. Because I think they just think, well, the school, the school will float us. You know, and, and we, we never have changed kids, we've never cut meals, so the kids will always get to eat, you know, you hear that in the, in the news, but that's not true. I mean, we have always done that in our school, um, but we do. Send home letters constantly to try to get here. We have sent collections, you know, and. But once you've sent that to collections, you have to write that out as bad debt. See, you're only gonna get part of it.
This year we also held, uh, four cards. And, and give report cards home to people who haven't paid their bill.
Made a difference.
That did. It wasn't a hundred percent, I mean, it, it got some people paying. That's a good idea.
So the other, um, transfer, um, from the activities fund. Was, uh, negative two hundred and twenty nine thousand seven hundred fifty seven dollars thirty five cents. Um, from that, I did not, the National Honor Society, the Student Council and the cross country. I left as they were positive. Um, and per the policy H D A C. At the end of the year, um, class funds or any other activities. That are no longer active are to be transferred to student council. So twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two and twenty three had not been transferred over. So I made those transfers into the student council account.
And I looked at my history, which went from twenty eleven through twenty fifteen. Um, the activities fund transfer was from about a hundred and sixteen thousand to a hundred and ninety four thousand. And I, I discontinued keeping it, but I think we have information in our packet. Will show what it was from maybe twenty seventeen or eighteen to twenty twenty two, but. It, it's not, you know, we don't make money on our activities. It's not unprecedented that we transfer. Funds from the general to activities to cover those. Uh, those activities are good for our kids, but, but we, we don't want, we don't want it to keep growing by ten or twenty percent a year, but. Those, those activities have benefit to our kids and our community and something.
And then the last one is, we had, um, last year, there was a three percent special reserve. Levy. And at the, you can transfer fifty percent of that general, uh, of that fund. Um. To the general fund if cho- if so chose, so. On advice of a, of a business manager, it was, you know, make the transfer. Um, because then you can see what is looking here on the, on the budget. And if, if you choose not to do it, I can. We, uh, reverse the, their journal entry, but you have to take it from the special fund. So the special reserve, the, the balance of the special reserve was. Oh, I don't have that in front of me, but. Eighty nine, the fifty percent of it is eighty nine thousand four hundred and twenty one dollars seventy nine cents. I transferred that from the special reserve to the general fund and then from the general fund to the building fund. And we don't have to, um. If you make a motion, I, at this point. Well, if you, yeah, you would have to include all of them if you're going to approve the June thirty in financial statements as they are written.
All right, now I've lost that page then, um.
What, first woman?
Yeah, but I, I've lost the file.
Oh.
Um, okay. So I, uh, a little history again, when I got on the board in twenty twelve, our, our special reverse reserve fund was about two hundred and twenty nine thousand. And it stayed there until. One year ago, we never transferred anything out of it. We never assessed, uh, we never levied any dollars to other. It increased by very small. I don't know, some interest went into that fund, they saw them. But so last year was the first year. And my, you know, eleven years on the board, that we dipped in it. That's kind of our savings account, okay? It's there in case we need it. Well, guess what? We needed it. So, and by law, we can only transfer fifty percent of that in any given year. So we transferred fifty percent of it to general fund and, and then transferred that to building, cuz that's where we needed it. So, um, and then we did levy. Our max three mills, so we would have added, I think, the, I, we visited yesterday, we added around sixty four thousand dollars through the mill levy. In twenty twenty three. And, um. And now, so now we're asking to take half of it again, to move to general, to move to building. And in all likelihood, we'll levy again to replenish it as best we can. So. The motion I'm seeking, uh, we should be able to do all of these transfers in a single motion, do you think?
I think what I'd like to do that second.
Okay, so we're going to start by, I'll start by entertaining a motion to transfer fifty percent. Of the special reserve to the general fund, about eighty nine thousand four hundred twenty one dollars and seventy nine cents.
So their motion.
Sire moves, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Dave seconds. Uh, any discussion? Again, this is fifty percent of the, the current balance. Um, that's we can transfer by law and the intent is to move it to general, so we can then move it to building to. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Uh, Heimbuck's absent, Sonny Neal.
Yes, the motion passes four to zero. Now I'll entertain a motion to move that same amount, eighty nine thousand four twenty one and seventy nine cents. From the general fund to the building fund. Is there such a motion? Dave moves, is there a second? Uh, Sire's second. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Heimbuck's absent, Sonny Neal.
Yes.
Oh, Sheila Nagel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Next, um, I'll seek a motion to move fifty five thousand three hundred twenty six dollars and sixty one cents. From the general fund to the hot lunch fund, which will make the hot lunch fund go to zero. Right, begin, begin the year with a zero balance there. Is there such a motion? Sheila Nagel moves, is there a second?
Second.
Rhonda Day's seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Heimbuck's absent, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sire. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonny Neal.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Uh. Next, uh, we'll move, we'll, um, seeking a motion to move two hundred twenty nine thousand. Seven hundred fifty seven dollars and thirty five cents from general fund to activities fund to make that account go to. The activities to zero. Make up the dots. Is there a motion? Rhonda Day moves, is there a second? Sheila Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel. Brian Sire.
Yes.
Uh, Heimbuck's absent, Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonny Neal.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Do you, are you seeking a motion to approve the NHS student council and cost contribution? No, that's done for following.
That's all included in that.
Oh, I see, okay. Got it. Okay, did we approve the pledge? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I got it. We did approve the pledge of assets?
Yep, I have it written down here. I have to replace.
Okay. Done with the financial portion of the business meeting next. Um. You want, uh, do you wanna do three actions on the handbooks or can we do just one?
I think they can do one.
Okay, so item two, second reading of the elementary, high school and activities handbooks. I did find a couple of things in the activity handbook that I pointed out yesterday.
I sent those to Rob and she's gonna clean those up.
Um, what was? Something that was. Um, on page twelve, which was seventy eight of the packet, referring to impact testing, there was a sentence that in the first part of the sentence. That every two years. And after track and field, it's a semi-annually, which means to me twice a year. Um. And I think it's intended to be every two years. So I didn't think that it needed to say. So she's just cleaning up some language related to the timing of impact testing. And then I did find one spot. Oh, in Prince and Elhandbook, I found the spot that still said twenty two, twenty three, which should say twenty three, twenty four. And I asked the, they checked all the handbooks to make sure the page was.
And so we'll change, once you decide on fees, we'll change those in the handbooks. Um, Greg and Jordan added. The student achievement goals, but I, if you have any questions about them, they're here, you know.
So I'm seeking a motion to approve as second reading and final adoption of the. So I'm seeking a motion to approve as second reading and final adoption of the elementary, high school and activities handbooks subject to the, the editorial changes and the addition of updated fees that we will approve. Uh, Nagel moves, is there? She'll have a second, oh, we've worked before. Go ahead.
Okay. This is just rumor or whatever, but somebody told me that last year, if you were ineligible, that you could sell those books. Is that just rumor at all?
Um, well, there was no, in junior high, there was no, um. There was no protocols for if the kids were not passing in class, they, they didn't have an eligibility. So in the junior high, they were able to play, but that's changing this year.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Sayer's second, all right. Any further questions or discussion? I would note that after our June meeting, when we had a first reading, these handbooks were all posted to the website.
We have.
Uh, for, uh, public influence and overwhelming response.
Nothing.
Okay.
Either one, they're not reading it anything.
And so I think it's wise to have, have, and people did have an opportunity. I would suggest that the responses will be throughout the year. That's when we'll see the complaint, so let's, let's, you know, compile. I'm, I'm sure that the administration does as we go through the year of, oh, yeah, maybe, you know, when you do have complaints, you say, no, well, that's policy. And that's how we do it and that's how they recommend continuing. But sometimes things come to light, like we just mentioned, that do need to be changed and we're responding to those.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's call the roll on this one.
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Heimbux absent, uh, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Um, oh, a first reading of the employee handbook, we can do this before. Okay, um, we have in our packet of the proposed employee personnel handbook. And I believe change, were there many changes? Anything was highlighted?
Just one, just one, it was the. Oh, yeah, I have did the hyperlink at the bottom. That was a new one that was, the, the thing about this is that these are hot links, you know, red links. And it goes to the change policy because our school boards update our policies. So, you know, it's not, we have to change this to the front paper plus, somebody needs information on that, they could still write it up. Let's say.
Wait, is there a motion to approve the employee personnel handbook as a first reading? Sayer moves, is there a second? Dave seconds, any discussion? Um, again, I had noted twenty-twenty-two, be updated, if there are any other dates that were overlooked. Um, and editorial changes. Um, any further discussion?
I didn't, you know, check, make sure we have all of the policies. So, yeah, last year I went through and updated all of them to make sure that, also, yeah, we did that last year. So then Shannon and I made sure that they, you know, that's all in line, that they're all updated. Anything new? We added anything new?
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Heimbux absent, Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. More fun, preliminary budget review. I gotta find, gonna find that now, I'll see what she sent me up. There, I'm fine. And then she changes it. Okay, so we're gonna be looking at the TV version.
Yes.
Not television, but it means Tom, then we, what now?
She'll bring the whole thing tonight. I just shared that one, was it, uh, what day is today, Thursday? Is it yesterday?
Yeah, it was yesterday.
There it is. But then I should email from this, you gotta go dig and clean.
Yeah.
July eighteenth. Sure, sound here. Or I'll share the file here if I can find it.
Well, that's easier.
The collective sigh and relief.
We all love her.
Well, I hear, I, I think I love her, I can. When she shares it. It's crazy, they're each other, they're changing it. Yeah, right.
There we go. So this is the, this is the spreadsheet that Tom shared or created for us last year. So what I have been doing is trying to incorporate, um, the, the other budgets. But. I succeed tabs. And I, I use that as my, kind of the worksheet. And then I, when I calculate the information, then I put it up here because I think this is so much easier to read. So if you look at the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, the actual, that is the actual income. We had a carryover starting of eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and four hundred and eighty-five, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Um, and then you can see all the, the different incomes that. Um, and then the expenses then are below that with the carryover of the general fund. Can you go down a little bit more, Anna?
Anybody you think you could make this a little bigger?
Oh, I try to make it bigger if I have you.
Yeah. If you're in the desktop version, it was a plus down the box.
What am I, what a?
Yeah, plus.
Yeah. Well, that's handy to know.
Then the web.
Yeah.
Just keep it.
Oh, there we go, there we go, thank you, much better. No, I don't need, I mean, I don't need those. But that's, that's distance, they're for reading.
Um, and so if you continue to go down, yeah. And the carryover is one point two million, almost one point three million dollars.
Okay, so that's, I, I thought that was very impressive, that we went up from eight hundred and twenty-three thousand and the bunching, ending general fund balance to one point three million. And. Uh, it, it will be interesting to see more detail of where we got additional revenue or less.
Well, there's five hundred and five thousand dollars of Ester funds that are in there, um, that. I mean, the, the five hundred and five thousand dollars of Ester income is, grant money is also included in the, the, uh, general fund income. But it was also, um. You know, without that, without the Ester funds, we still would have had to pay the five hundred and five thousand in teacher salaries. So it's a little skewed if you were to take that one point three minus the five hundred thousand.
But then we'd still almost be even, right? From eight, we're up by four hundred thousand, so we'd definitely down by about. Uh, and this ending general fund balance of about one point three million reflects the transfers that we just approved.
Correct, yep, you'll see, so you'll see right here, there's their transfer funds that's going to the building, that's going to the hot lunch fund. And that went to, uh, the activities fund. Anna, can you scroll up for me, please? That's fine, keep going all the way to the top. Yep, keep going though, that's the Ester expenses, because I have to put them in a special account code for web grants and DPI. So here is our income. Um. Yep. There's our property taxes. Um. Transportation, student, uh, transportation, there was our per pupil aid. Um, and then here, um, sixty-seven, let's see, federal title one, title two and two and four got combined, but I had to keep them separate here. There's our Ester fund income. Um.
Where's the special reserve transfer?
That's our laser pass.
Oh, there it is.
Transfer from the special reserve, so it went in, yep. Um, and then this is, well, that is, uh, what the insurance gave us for the chiller repairs. But, yeah.
We, oh.
So we had given, we had the insurance company come out, or they did a phone video with Dave to look at the chiller to stay. Because on the chiller and the boiler.
Oh, we got some, we did.
Hmm, I'm sorry, yes.
Was that very recently or was this, this wasn't related to something that we?
No, that was just in June or May, uh, when did the chiller, June, it had to have been June. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was discussed.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
They got turned in a claim, but.
Yes, we got turned in a claim and they said, so now, of course, um. We have a chiller, we got claimed on it, we are not fixing it, they are aware of that, the insurance companies are aware of that. But, so we can't, basically cannot put a claim in on that chiller again, because we aren't fixing it, which. Doesn't work, so. Um, okay, so we are in.
So, so let me, let me ask a little more about that, should that really go into the building fund?
I tossed that around a little bit, but the insurance, the insurance, uh, premium is paid from the general fund. So I was told at one time to. Put that where your insurance premiums are from.
Okay. So, so, but we could conceivably transfer, as we just transferred from special to general and general to building, we could conceivably transfer to build because we're at negative on buildings, right?
Um, as the building, let's see, building.
And isn't that where we'll pay?
Yeah. For the new one, correct.
Or if we got a new one. Or we.
As of June thirtieth, our building fund is, including with the transfers that we just, that was just approved of eighty-nine thousand four twenty-one seventy-nine, it still is a negative. Anna, can you keep going down? Yeah, go in this column. Nope, that's okay. Keep going, oh, yeah. This is general fund, there's the special reserve that was our income for the year for our three, three mils that were levied. That was the transfer that was just approved. The building fund started at negative two hundred thousand, we had levies of, uh, twenty mils for four hundred and forty-three thousand, uh, income. Uh, we had the track donation from Starian Insurance Recovery. So now this one was the car, because no, that's not the car. I can't remember off the top of my head what that one is. The auditor had me make a journal entry, make, uh, from the audit in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So I had to enter that in there, keep going a little bit farther. Okay, so here's our expenditures so far for the year. Uh, as of June thirtieth, our building fund is still in the negative at six thousand dollars.
So if we would go down the path of renting that chiller, that would be an operational expense. But if we buy a chiller, that to me would come out of building, so I'm not really sure. I, I don't think it really matters a lot at this point. But, I mean, we know we're negative in building. Travel. Surplus and we are surplus increased in the general, but now we see why.
And we could very well easily transfer that hundred and forty-five cents.
I'm sure. We could do that at any time, if you want to do a little more research on it and. But it would, so if we wanted to, we wanted it to be reflective in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Today, correct? Okay. That we see all this. It's just starting to make a little more sense, now that we can see the, the funds together.
Okay, can you scroll up for me? We missed, uh, oh, that was special, no, I'm sorry, keep going down, let's go to the, I think hot lunch is next. So there's where we had our carryover, our expen, our income. And then, so here's where you were looking for your wages, Brian?
Yes.
And then the benefits.
What's the purpose of having a hot lunch account?
Century code says hot lunch has to have its own fund.
You'll notice we get grants there, federal grants for breakfast and lunch, vegetables.
Yep.
Non-food assistance, I don't know what that was, but you know, that's, that flows into that because that's what it has to be used for.
Yep.
And it's always kind of baffled me why others put their, they don't pay their salaries for their kitchen staff.
That was just the one, uh, that was one school that, that had commented that, but they said, oh, yeah, we're in the black. But we pay our hot lunch out of the general fund, which I found odd, but. That's their deal, I guess. Okay, Anna, can you scroll down, then we'll hit the activities fund? So we started, our activity fund balance was forty thousand dollars. That was most likely the student council, the class, the three or the four or five classes that were still in there. Um. Student council, National Honor Society, the classes, I think is what made up that forty thousand dollars. And then the total income that activities between, um. That income on this actually includes the two hundred and twenty-nine thousand that we just transferred. The income there is gate fees, um.
Oh.
Participation fees.
There is a line transfer from general, so maybe.
Oh, may I should probably, okay. Oh, yeah, I should take that out, yep, yep. So then that would be a more, uh, more accurate number of what that would be. Um, gate fees, participation fees, um, if, uh, if, uh, any donations. If there is, um, if a sport or activity goes to state, we are reimbursed from the, the high school association. Um, and so then they, they send a spreadsheet out at the, it must have paid in May, I'm guessing. And it, it gives you a per diem kind of for taking your kids to state. So then I took those and put those into each respective activity, um, because they hadn't broke out. I think it was around three thousand dollars.
So the transfers must be in the other years as well. Yeah, because there's no way that.
Yeah.
I mean, our income.
I think I put that on there because if you see, I have this right here.
It would be great if I would update those.
Okay, okay, yep. Yep, I, because this is our, our next year's budget and that's what I have us for, but I have. Yep.
I believe when I was first on the board, our conference said it's not going to go over a hundred and eighty thousand.
And then I haven't done anything to the trust and agencies, this, um, this is the ending fund balance, but this is. Uh, this is our dedicated fund, so there are, uh, this would include PTO funds, which we really, we, we. I, I take care of and I write checks when they tell me to and I, or carry deposits when they tell or. I, I take care of and I write checks when they tell me to, and I deposit or carry deposits when they tell her to, but we don't don't take any of it, we don't use any of it, we don't. So I, I really have done nothing for this. And I, last year, that was the same thing. It was just a hundred and a hundred out, because we don't, we don't control, we don't have any idea what their budget are, what their plans are, or anything, so. And that's the last bit.
Okay, good information. Um so that is our preliminary budget review, so we've identified maybe a couple of things we'd like to see presented differently on the historical and Shannon's still working on um line by line, the twenty three, twenty four projected budget, right?
What was the historical again, so I can write that down?
The things we want to change, or, or, well, the activity.
Transfer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So let's slide back up to, okay, the hundred and one thousand dollar insurance uh claim revenue that went into general. So what? What would be the negative about us transferring that to building? Our building would then go to positive. Which, we know we'll use it, uh and our ending general fund balance will actually still be higher than it was last year.
How many, did you want to go down to the building? You know, go up, go all the way up. There it is, right there.
Okay, but go, go all the way to the top, so we can see the, oh no, this is, no, this is. No, no, uh whatever.
The general fund.
This is general fund. So the hundred and one thousand seven eighty forty nine cents. So what I'm, okay, so now, if we keep that amount in our minds and we go down to the general fund, beginning and ending and, and building, but, but we so our, our negative, our building at a negative sixty six would go to a thirty five, thirty, about a positive thirty five thousand. And our general would go from about one point three million down to um one point, just under one point two. Which is, neither of those are bad things, right? What are your thoughts, Shannon and Anna?
Well, if I remember, Tom said too, that you can go onto the negative on your building, but they kind of frown on it, so they kind of gave us the okay for that one year. I think it was Adam pressure that said. I think, yeah, but maybe try to justify that. But I like the idea of moving that insurance order, because personally, I don't see a so I would rather have that there to use against towards the cost, but whatever you do. And I would like to see it in last fiscal year.
Yeah.
Then, this current. And that's, yeah, I, I, I was, I heard, I walked it over to starting if I wanted to.
Okay, so we've identified um that we uh I see then a motion to transfer one hundred one thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and forty nine cents representing the money revenue on the chiller from general to building fund for the June twenty, uh the twenty twenty three. Nagel makes motion, is there a second? Day's second. Is there any discussion? Is there any further discussion? I, I don't see any downside to this. Cleaning up and putting our building in a positive. Um S R funds are, have all been accounted for appropriately, so we can't say, oh, no, you took those S R funds to do that, that is you've accounted for all that.
Correct. The, and the, the S R funds have been depleted and or drawn down with the exception of learning loss with fifty, almost fifty eight thousand, but that can't, I mean, that has to be under learning loss um activities, so there is, so as far as, you know, anything else, there's, we can't take, there's no more to draw out.
Okay, all right, so any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Uh Sheera Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck's absent, Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonny Meele.
Yes, we passed it's four to zero. Okay, anything else on the preliminary budget review? Oh, do you need us to approve that? It says action.
Yeah, actually, that was, I, that was just kind of the June financials that I went through. The budget that.
Oh, can we go back to that, Anna?
Maybe. I couldn't get it to open, because it's in Excel, and I was like, I'm not logging into Excel. All the way to the top, please, yes. That's what I was wondering, and then I thought they popped it up, so I saw it. Are you still, are you using? Since Brian got fired, people.
Okay, because you're using that email.
So then obviously, this number will change, this will go down a hundred and one thousand. I took the property taxes, I took seventy mills, I, I went up about um I think it took like a three percent increase, because I looked at Dickey County, and I think I think Lamoore County went up four and a half, but you know, they're only at not even a million dollars in land value, so or property value. So until I hear from the other two counties, if I do, um, that's at seventy mills. Um driver's education, um I, I think, oh, you don't have the little squares on there. Um that I took, I think, I, I asked, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars, and I can't remember if we were going to go up. Okay, so that's a hundred and fifty dollars times whatever. I think there were thirty kids is what we're estimating next year. Um interest income, we did really well this year, um so I just bumped it up a little bit, since we've still got the S R funds sitting in there. Um S R C T C, um I did change state rental income, it's just over thirty five hundred dollars a month for rent. Per pupil aid, well, let's keep going to transportation. This uh comes right off the transportation report I funded in the in the state aid worksheet, worksheet, so that should be pretty close. Title five, we don't have notification, or have you gotten notification?
Yeah.
Nope, it's not on web grant, so I just used what we did last year. Uh REAP, this is station, I don't remember what A and P stand for. Um we have half of this year's left and all of next year, so that's that number. Federal title grant, we don't have that number, I just use the same, what we were granted last year. Fifty seven, oh, that's our learning loss that's left.
That has been used.
This is by the end of this year, I think, right, June of twenty four. Twenty four, twenty five, but we have, oh, yeah, we've got it here, take pretty good. E-rate, um we had applied in January, I think. Um we had D R N come in last week, and they did they're moving the elementary wiring closet. Anyways, it was a two thousand wow, that's half of it. And so as soon as they're done, or as soon as D R N fills me, then I'll be able to apply for the, the grant. And uh whoops, where'd we go? Oh, okay. Oh, the bus grant, so this is going to, this includes um the clean diesel grant of twenty two thousand. And then the other grant, the V W grant that Brett from I State tells us it might be November, December, when we get our new bus, so then once we get that new bus, obviously, then we'll dismantle the other one and we'll get the, the rest of the grant. Those are those two grants together. Um this is just a, uh Cheyenne or a Oh, yes, yes, that's what that is. Yep.
We don't have a number in there for twenty two, twenty three.
Shannon put it in a different account, twenty two, twenty three.
So there's some.
It's, it's in there, but it didn't go to that account, that was. Okay, um so let's go back up here to per pupil dime. So I was able to take, oh, here's my drivers, that was forty, forty students at a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the other federal revenue that is on there at thirty thousand dollars. That is uh what's remaining of our choice ready grant, the P C B L grant, and this science of reading grant. The REAP E-rate and the V W, the V W grant will be fifty three thousand, and then the clean air is twenty two thousand. Okay, so now I'll go up to the student aid of four point five, so I've completed excuse me, the worksheet, um I, I don't, I don't know, it's this complicated little bugger. Um I, I plugged in all the numbers from the stars on the um for A D M. Um, and then I, I kind of reached out to a couple of people on different things for revenue or estimations on the total revenue for our electricity, our electric generation, mobile home, and telecommunications. And then I was able to plug in um our contributions from well, we, I don't even get to do that. They use the valuation of our district taxable valuation from twenty twenty two was twenty two million seven hundred and twenty one thousand five hundred and ninety six dollars. And it takes sixty mills. So that comes up to one point three six million dollars, and so they deduct that from our student, our state student aid. So the worksheet comes up with four point uh six million dollars. And what was our eight, what was our A D M? A D M would be the total average daily membership for this coming school year is estimated to be four eighty five point seventy, is a weighted A D M.
What was it last year?
Oh, yeah. And then they'll, this is, this is like a moving target, you know, because then they adjust for your average daily membership in September, and then they adjust for it in the spring, and you know, there's, there's adjustments that'll go in there.
We, we're getting a fairly, a, a recognizable increase despite a reduction of about twenty students estimated in the the dollars.
And then you can see the difference then between the we're still, obviously, this includes your, your S R numbers too. Okay, let's uh keep going down, Anna. So this is the hard, this is, the, the hard parts are the, the kindergarten, the elementary, these guys are I'm working on them. Uh this will really be, I could have plugged that, because that'll be the exact number that the grant is. Um same with the REAP, title one, all of these will be the same. Um we have no more S R dollars, we would have the sixty thousand dollars of learning loss. Okay, keep going. Cheyenne Valley. Um, we had gone up, I had to go up. Um, did you tell me to go down last year? Well, they said to budget for the same amount, but they're not expecting an overage like last year, but still budget for it.
And keep in mind that this, this line item for Cheyenne Valley Special Ed is over and above a significant dollar amount that the state withholds from our state aid.
And we can tell you that number would have. Okay, so then I'm going to try and find my S R C T C, okay. This is where I switch back to the tabs. Well, let's go to the next one, and I'll keep trying to find, find where it came up.
Our goal here is you are going to need, oh, are you going to need a, a approval of this as a first reading?
I think we had the first reading last.
Need action on this, this is different information.
And then I
Good information.
Go, go up, let's see, where are we? Especially, okay. Go up a little bit more. So I was able to get a couple of them, I started obviously easy, I can go to my own business manager, I plugged in my own salary. Um social security, um T F F R, or not T F R, PERS, which um the employer's percentage goes up by one percent on January first, so instead of eight point two six for PERS, the school will then have to pay nine point two six for PERS retirement. And the employee stays the same. So that would be reflective in that hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. But that's across the board for all uh non-certified staff. So yeah, that's, that makes up seventy thousand dollars in salary, ninety four hundred dollars for health insurance, social security, PERS, a hundred and fifty some dollars for workforce safety, a flex, the flex account, uh travel at twenty two hundred, I did move that up a little bit from what we had budgeted before. Um because I, uh we had budgeted thirteen hundred last year, and I, I spent twenty one hundred dollars of travel. Most of that is part of that for, for software, for the training and um business certification training, so. Um supplies and accounting software, um it, and it was budgeted at six thousand, I spent eighty three hundred. And so I budgeted sixty five hundred, a lot of that was just trying to get different computers and stands. Equipment, I left it two thousand, I only spent twelve hundred last, last dues fees, was that nine thousand? Um I know there were some, some some fees that were put in there that made it to thirteen thousand, almost fourteen thousand dollars. I think there were some journal entries last year that were plugged in there, and
So what you're doing right now is detailing.
Detailing your two hundred, a hundred and thirteen thousand, yep.
And so.
And I don't know if you guys want to know all that, I mean, I was able to go into the superintendent one and do kind of the same thing.
So you're doing that with every single line item, you're going through all that level of detail before you populate the final number into.
Correct. Yep, yep, yep. And so those are, those were the hardest parts, so I got all the, what I considered the easy part. Done, and then now it's just a matter of going through the custodians, uh the principal, the elementary, the principals would really be hard, or the the, you know, some of the ones where there's the fewer Employees or teachers or staff are, are easier. I mean, Larry's just got himself and some. You know, Virginia.
So looking at the school board line item, I see we were at 183,000. Now, when, when I've looked at the detail of a school board, a lot of the, it's not school board. A lot of it is, it's, it's just central supplies and a lot of things that are just district wide. But why is that up so much?
Okay, so on school board, we have, so in there we had, that's where we have the apps and software fees. It's a district wide. Apps, budgeted was $40,000. Some of the, we didn't spend just about 20,000, but. I, I think some of the budget, some of the elementary and high. Maybe I put some of the apps where they perhaps should have been in here as opposed to the elementary and the high schools. The board members are just $50 a meeting. We budgeted 3,000 last year. We only spent 1,600. And there's social security, the unemployment costs go here. Professional development was only budgeted 3,000. It went up to 5,100 this year and.
For the board.
For the board. This is all the board. Yep. You know, and that, that includes the B legendary grant, what we had to pay and then the half of our. Growing small towns, the food, that type of thing. Legal was, we only spent $3,300 of legal. We spent, we actually had nothing budgeted in. Audit fees. Yeah, and that bill came in at $18,000. So that was a little bit of a hit on the budget. Consultations, we had, there was $5,000 budgeted. We spent 10.
Is ICS in there?
I'm guessing that's where that one is. I'm not, I don't have the detail of what the 10,000 value is. Yep. The liability insurance was almost right on. Publishing and printing was double. We, we budgeted six grand and we spent almost 13.
So some of that is advertising for employment and the old times.
It's almost all old times, but I would imagine between, you know, the minutes and the advertising is probably a big thing. And every bid I have to put out goes out there every, every week we get billed for an ad. Travel was up. We budgeted 2,000. There was 26. But we did a lot of, we did a lot of activities this year. Central purchases was bid, are budgeted at 25 grand and we only spent 21,300. That's your office supplies, the, yep, you know, paper, white marker, whiteboard markers, construction paper, poly.
All right, this is a lot of detail. I, I, so you see the process she's going through to figure out what to populate into this and. And we're not looking for action on this right now, so. Great, so. That completes item four of the business meeting. So then if we, item five, can we, are you, does anybody want to pull one or more of these A through H items out? For individual action or are, can we make a single motion for approval of all? Yeah, I was gonna, I, that, yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.
With phones at 9:15.
9:19 AM. When can you restart the recording, please? Oh, unmute, unmute the recording. Okay, so now we're on item five under business to review and set 23, 24 fees. What are your wishes with regard to these?
I think we can do it as a whole. We can, I, I think you can just set these as a one motion, but is there anything that any of you, I mean, because you guys are the ones that set these fees. On the lunch, I, after hearing the lunch, the cases where we're at money-wise, Jara has done research on this. She sat through a session. We're right in the middle and I talked to other students, gotten information from other school districts. We're not on the high end, we're not on the low end. We're smack dab in the middle. We are charging less for our milk than we should be charging. The state is saying 80 cents, 80 to 85 cents per carton of milk because it's got up so much.
That's extra because they get one with their meal.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so that would be like snack break in the afternoon or if they get another, but Jara felt that was too big of a jump. Her suggestion was to go up a little bit, so I put that up at 60 cents. I just added 10 cents per meal. Because I feel like we need to move up or we need to move up, but I don't know if you want to. Adult meals though are ones that we are way lower on. So, because we don't get any kind of reimbursement for them and most of the adults get two milks, two of the, the main course. So. We were very low on adult meals. This is more in line with other schools now.
Your show's all increased?
Um, no, okay, so here's the one that I have, I'm sorry, it was, I don't, I don't own that form. It's very strong, but so. That, um. So I should just say, activity passes, Robin is suggesting that we just remain the same as last year. Activity admission, admission premium the same unless, these are just my suggestions. Participation fees, we are going to go up in the elementary to $25 or this is what Robin is proposing, $40 in the junior high, $50 in high school. Substitute teacher pay, I'm suggesting $145 just to keep up plus free lunch. Driver's education instead of $150, $200. I mean, we've got increased cost on our car, the maintenance of it, the gas, all of those pieces. 450 out of district. Computer insurance, that was included in Larry's report. When we met, we talked a lot about, we have the same kids having breaks. So why should a kid that never has a break on their computer have to pay the same that somebody that is continually breaking? So we want to do a tiered rate insurance. So. There, each break, so it's $50 a year, but if you have a break, the next year you're going to be $75. If you have two breaks, you're going to pay $100. And if the high school kids do not take out insurance, they don't take computers home because the breaks are happening at 100 grand, but we're finding out. So are, we met for a long time on that with our technology and that's kind of what we're proposing.
That's a good idea.
And a $25 debtful after break. So no longer do you just get one break. You're going to have to pay $25 plus your insurance. Again, breakfast and lunch rates, you can see the changes that I have on there. Yearbook, I don't think that's any big deal. We are not even coming close to. Yearbook, we're losing money. So we are proposing raising elementary $15, high school to at least $40. It's what 40 and 43 dollars, so.
What was the milk crate?
40. And you know, and I, I was like, that seems like a lot, but if you go up town and you buy a thing of milk, it's, yeah, and so every, every carton of milk that we have, we're losing, oh. Quite a bit of money and you know, a milk and snack break in the afternoon? Yeah. Those ways?
No, kids get a lot of it.
For milk and, for milk and juice, not a lot of milk goes out at the lunch break or the, sorry, the snack break. It's more juice. But again, it's lunches, it's all milk, yeah, but.
So what's the cost of juice compared to milk for us? I think it's very similar.
I think they're similar topics. I think when she, when she's saying milk slash juice there, I think it's basically one of the same.
What are other schools charging for adult lunch?
Oh, just curious. Yeah, every school that I, is over $4. I remember 4.50, but okay, we talked again too. If you go up to T stuff to get a salad, you're gonna, like, we went there and ate the other day and I had salad and drank. It was $15.
It's crazy.
And we paid 3.75 for our, for our adult lunch.
I would actually like to see that go up 50 cents, four and a quarter. And I think the salad bar only should go up too, okay? Because that fresh stuff is expensive. Okay, so adult. Then 4.25, right, is that what it was? 4.25 a meal?
4.25 or 25.
I would, I would suggest 4.5.
Do not get reimbursement for adult meals. So that's all just coming in. That's staff and parents, right? Yeah.
Again, it's cheaper.
So 4.50 for an adult meal. So adult meal, and what did you say for the salad bar?
What is it now?
You scroll one more page.
So then breakfast would be 3.25?
3.25 for breakfast? So adult meals now where what's on the table is 4.50 for an adult lunch and 3.25 for an adult breakfast. She would propose 2.50 for salad bar only. Just throwing out some things so we can keep moving.
Yeah, yeah, 2.50.
But other than that, we're, well, we're just suggesting to approve the changes as proposed, other than the adults.
But we're talking, we aren't going to change your activity passes. Changed everything else.
I, yeah, well, Robin had better research and I think that we're very similar to other schools. Even she did for activity tickets, you know, there are some schools that are seven and five, but most are six and four, but there's nothing saying that we can't. You know, we just use area schools to.
Did we go up last year?
We did. That was another thing that Robin said, let's, she felt like we, we did it already last year. And remember last year we added the student pass.
Right.
And we, did we add senior last?
We've had seniors for a while.
Yeah. Um, I will tell you on the activity and participation, this year, because of shortage of bus drivers, also, you know, are raising costs. So for elementary sports, we are no longer going to pay the bus driver because it, you know, it's kind of morphed into. The bus driver was paid. There, we're also paid sitting. They were also, so we're not going to pay elementary bus drivers anymore and they have to find our bus drivers because they, this, that struggles to do that. So. Any of our elementary sports that pay participation fees, so you can see there volleyball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, participation fees. If they pay a participation fee for that sport, we will give them the bus and the gas. We're not going to charge them for that, but we're not going to pay a bus driver anymore and they have to find their bus driver and it's just going to be all volunteer. And if they can't find a bus driver and they can't find, they're going to have to drive their kids in their car. Now wrestling and football are different because they don't pay participation fees at school. So they're going to have to pay fuel for the bus. Along with their driver, you know, because we don't take in any money from those, but the reason for the rise in the fees is paid for the fuel for those buses.
So why don't we take in activity fees for football and wrestling?
They've always just done their own activity fees and, and.
Linebackers and the wrestling, all the sponsor posts.
Yes. But we will still, if they want to do a bus, they'll, you know, we'll look at it. They're just going to have to pay the fuel for the, the buses and, you know, obviously we're going to eat the cost of the bus driving there besides fuels, but. We just maybe a way to recoup it, but if Robin's going to talk to linebackers and she's going to talk to wrestling and just say, hey, we'll offer you the same thing. You pay your activity fees to us. We'll, we'll pay for your fuel and your bus.
Is there, does Tornado Watch or some other entity still, if students, whether they be elementary, junior high or high school are identified that cannot or that are. Aren't going to participate, may not participate because of difficulty paying participation fees. Are there ways to identify those? Get them scholarships, so to speak?
And grieving, I was like, yeah, they.
Tornado watch.
Okay. So I don't, if you want to do activity passes or admission, that would be up to you guys. And the driver's ed, we're going to raise the driver's ed again. So there's some cover data.
All right, so you have the proposed changes before you, we made a couple of, of changes to the proposal. So again, if we can act on items A through H in a single motion, that would be fine. If anyone wants to pull out one or more of those for more discussion. I think the computer insurance technology committee has done a really good job of, of identifying and proposing. Good solutions there. Sounds like activities have done a lot of due diligence.
So we've raised the boat, the adult price to 4.50, salad bar, adult salad bar to 2.50 and adult breakfast to 3.50. Are those changes? Oh, okay.
Does anybody see a problem raising the activity fees $10 for each one? Nothing else in this world is going down. I think it's a lot easier to do it. Make small increments than they start.
We got 45 and so 35. That activity passes. Great, oh, excuse me, just 35. Oh, okay, I, I was thinking fam, family and single.
Yeah.
Maybe leave student and senior alone.
Family 160 and single 80.
So then if you have two singles, like a, a husband or whatever, no. You pay, well, maybe create two singles at 75, but you'd be the same. But I'm, I'm going to follow up for senior, so that's why I'm.
80 or 75?
Raised it last year from what?
Oh, not your one. Not your one?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay, so does everyone share on what, what changes we've made to the proposal?
Admission price is still the same? Want to go up with your admission?
Think so.
No.
I don't know.
Okay, what are we doing with junior high? I, I know it's difficult. We have been charging for junior high, but it's difficult to get people to be at the ticket desk. I mean, I, I would be willing to be at the ticket desk at times. No, I think I should have that, but I'm not going to commit to doing everyone.
So you know, Robin and I, and we've had discussions about this and we can, we'll continue to have discussions as paying, okay, we need Joseph Dobitz. Hey Joseph, he'll sit at that game and you'll sit at the junior high game. We'll either pay him or we'll let him have something on the conception standard pass. So Robin and I have talked about that too. Or offering to a family that maybe can't afford a family pass. I'm telling them, hey, you'll work like quarter for games or whatever. We would come up with that, then they would get a family pass.
Well, and then at, at those events, instead of putting the ticket booth out in the lobby, put it in the gym, like if it's in the north gym. And, you know, even if people aren't walking, well, they will because we don't use the bleachers on the east. So they would have to come over to the west side of the gym and here's where you pay your admission. Even if you don't get every single one.
Robin and I worked together on some of that stuff. We talked to Carrie about how we can work for, but I think. I mean, we need the income, right?
So you can at least, junior high events take in at least enough to pay your bills.
Right.
And I, I don't want to give them, take time off the board to say, well, should it be four and six of the junior high to get you guys to say that? But it can be less, but I, I think we should try to get enough revenue at least to pay our.
Okay.
It seemed to work out well last year, the audit track. And then cops it right.
It was kind of funny. Okay, then, so is if, if there is a motion to approve. All of the fees that we have discussed and the changes we've discussed, is there such a motion? Sire moves, is there a second? Like a snail seconds. So is there any further discussion? Now that we have a motion on the board, we can start discussing. Any further discussion? It sounds to me like due diligence has been done by all departments in justifying these proposals. And, and in addition to the changes the board has proposed today and that. Students whose families cannot afford participation fees, there are also alternatives for them because I don't want them to not be able to participate. All right, any further discussion? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's call the roll one more time.
All righty, Brian Sire, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Uh, Heimbuck's absent, Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Now, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, two-year audit bid.
All right.
Didn't have anything in our pocket or anywhere else on that.
I was going to say it's red, but I never found it. Well, because the bid closing closed yesterday. So we received one bid.
Oh.
From Nadine Julson LLC. To do, um, of the two-year audit, June twenty-twenty-two to twenty. Years ending twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, excuse me. Um, they, both of them, um, will have to be done as a single-year audit. Because of our income is over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, federal income was over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the loan bid came in at twenty-eight thousand dollars. For two audits.
Correct.
Not twenty-eight thousand dollars per audit.
No, twenty-eight thousand dollars for both audits for the two years.
Possibly.
Yes.
We are submitting a bid of twenty-eight grand for the years ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Because we just finished twenty-twenty-one, we have to get twenty-twenty-two and I said, twenty-twenty-three will be done in the. But again, they are also more involved, their, their last one was more involved because. It has to be a single-year eye, it has to be.
Okay, um, you need approval of.
I do.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, uh, the audit bid from Nadine Julson LLC? Oh, Nagel moves, is there a second? Dave's seconds, any discussion? Would be interesting to know how many dollars public entities pay and pay in total for all audits. Even if you get audited by the state, it sounds like those are even more.
Yes.
That's the company that did that last audit.
Correct.
And what did they charge for the one year?
Uh, it was two years.
Oh, it was two years?
Eighteen thousand.
It was a two-year audit.
Ten thousand dollar increase.
One of the years was a year.
One of the year.
Was a single years.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're doing an audit for twenty-one, twenty-two, that's full year, and then he has to do another audit because we need more than a million dollars in federal funds or we took in more than a million dollars.
So they don't necessarily audit them together, they're auditing two years because. Um, in prior history, if you weren't above that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars threshold or threshold, you could, you just needed to have it audited every other year, a year for two years. Okay, once basically Esther Moniz came around and we, we hit that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He has to audit each year, well, they have to audit each year, but that last year that we just had done. Hit that seven hundred and fifty, there's more work to do. Um, because of that meeting that threshold.
So the last audit they did, we did meet that threshold?
Yeah.
The last year.
One of the two years.
Yeah.
And this, in this audit, we'll have two of the two years.
Yeah, we already know that we hit that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Who was your justification of ten thousand dollars?
I, he originally told me when I first started, it was, he thought we didn't have a bid, so he, I just asked him, you know, like.
So.
I didn't.
You did?
Because we had several, we had something.
Well, we engaged somebody else, but yeah, but we put it out for bids because we had a bid from I.
My family from them, uh, there was at least one other one.
Yeah.
We have, you bet you.
We did.
But those were a lot more. Oh, a lot more.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, every schools are talking about across nation or across the state.
I mean, didn't, that's, this was the only thing I forgot.
This is true.
Yeah, I forgot.
We have to, we have.
That's required.
We have to be audited.
But do we have to accept it for the timeline? For, you know, you said it would, it came, the bid had to be in yesterday?
Yesterday.
So can we ask them for justification of ten thousand dollars?
Oh, don't make them mad.
Nobody does it.
I know, but. How much more work because they already had the initial work done, right? They already have a portfolio mentioned. To a point.
Well, I think each year is, is different, he even has to go through the accounts and, I mean, yeah, he's familiar with us and, you know, familiar with me, I guess, but. I don't remember, did they issue one or two reports last? Just this last week or this last month?
Yeah.
It was just one report, one report.
Great.
Yeah, it was published.
And this will be two weeks.
Yeah, so that was eighteen thousand for one and this is three.
Two reports too, so it's actually.
Yes, they issued two results.
Well, I thought, said it was for two years.
Combine the little big board.
Yes.
Each report is filed separately then with the federal audit committee and then with the state. And then there's the, uh, thirty-four, I think he has.
Good questions, Brian, I'm, I'm doubtful that we'll get any more bidders or that anybody will do it for less, but. The timing of this, do you, are we, do you feel we need to approve it today? I, I don't, I don't know that we're going to do any better.
I think, I think we have to, because I think, I, if I remember the bid said we would.
You were awarded?
Yeah, yeah. And he could get started so that he could finish by December before tax season starts and then we get stuck waiting because they are due June thirty. So each year, the, let's see. Twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two would be due coming June. So in order to get them done, I mean, they gave us a kind of a grace because of the turnover and everything, but they were late.
All right, what are your wishes? There a motion? Oh, do we have a motion? Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
I haven't yet, Nagel and Dave motion.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck is absent, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sire. Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passive support in there. Okay, staffing update.
So we, um, Reed, huge role, but Bobby is working very hard and diligently and running all the systems, but Reed. Just floating a lot of stuff and say there's a lot of outsourcing and he drove bus first and he, oh, he's a really good guy. Going to miss the first Ryan especially. That was just for information, open positions, okay, so I would give you some updates on open positions. We do, did lose an assistant cook, Tricia Gima decided to stay home with her baby. They work for that, right? We still need, um, so for custodians, um, we're going to maybe do some switching around. We think we have somebody for the lunch clerk position, but we'll know more on that next month. Specialized, we did hire a high school specialized teacher, we interviewed, um, and he accepted the position. We are still looking for five and a half care professionals, we did hire a half-time care professional. Got some ideas on what we're going to do, um. Greg is working on that, as well as Jordan, trying to hire coaching, you can see the things that we have coaching. Football junior high is on par. So Greg's working on those things, but we still have positions that are super important that we fill because we're just going to be running short, um, route bus drivers. We'll talk more about buses tonight at the thing, but if we don't have enough route bus drivers, we may end up having to consolidate routes, possibly cutting out town busing. We just don't have enough bus drivers to drive for activities if we don't have people to drive the activities. So for, uh, kitchen staff then, we're actually down. A cook or an assistant.
An assistant cook and a lunch clerk, which was McKinsey.
Yes, but we think we maybe have that one filled and then do some custodial work too to make a full-time position. Because McKinsey with his position is given part-time, so Dave and Chen and I are working. But assistant cook that's out there, we have all of these things, oh, English teacher, we're still short that, but I think we've got that being care of. Jordan's been working really hard on getting the schedule and getting people moved so they can teach those courses. And, um, you know, we've gotten some applications from the Philippines, but it's just, the timeline's too short in order for them. So maybe possibly that'll be an option for next year, but for now, we're, we're going to go with what we've got with Jordan's changes.
Could, could you possibly, uh, do it for starting in the second semester?
Well, that's a really good question.
Thought about that, but also then what if we get like the Tisim other out?
Sure, yeah, 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 you could maybe get a December graduate.
Yeah, so I'm not going to.
You'd have to completely change your own a lot of schedules. I mean, because we're changing schedules for a whole year to make this work and then you'd have to change it mid-year, which would be.
And then would it also affect the classroom too? I mean, because you've got your last plans.
And our, our staff is been very good about it, I think so far, you know, they have the understanding, they know that we're trying to find them, so. What they need to do to help out too.
Oh, we're blessed.
Yeah.
Uh, and you're having an open house for Cheyenne Valley.
I mean, now, what do you get that on?
Thirty-first, the night of the thirty-first from four to seven, it'd be great if you guys would help, uh, broadcast that message. People, anybody interested, um, that would like to know more about the job, you can interview on the spot. We just want people to come in and see what it's like or see what it's about, ask questions.
Exactly, and at our last board meeting, we are changing or in the works of adjusting our salary schedules so that the. Uh, care professionals will get some credit for doing extra, um, horse work, you know, trying to give them extra pay incentive. Also making sure that we communicate fully to the applicants, like, okay, so you get to feed a full family or a full, um, single insurance, you know, and you get, uh, retirement. And you know, to let them know instead of just fourteen dollars an hour, there's benefits that accompany it too that other jobs don't have that. So we're trying to market super hard on that, but again, these guys are working hard on trying to figure out what we're going to do. And teachers are just going to have to end up filling spots and there's going to be rearranged, you know, schedules.
Do we need a motion for the drivers? That need to be the pay increase.
Okay, I don't, I don't think so, right? That is, like, I can move that pay correctly, right? But if, so do you think we do, I don't think the drivers, because it's not on the contract.
Right, you're talking, you're talking about the instructor. I think you can make that.
Okay, if I find that differently, we can bring it back.
Because it'll be for next year, right?
Yes. I'll put that down.
Just know that there are one that's not listed.
Okay, that is the end of the items for action review on this agenda. Um, items for future agenda, evaluation models for superintendent and business manager and then talk about in the caucus. Future meetings, we have our board retreat this evening. I would add that I've been notified and I think the rest of you other than Brian probably should have been notified about the innovative education, um. Seminar, the statewide innovative education, whatever you call, they call it, um, in Fargo on August the fifteenth. And it shouldn't, okay, so it's, the reason I think I got it is, well, I get it. Because I do for maybe other reasons, but because we, uh, our entire board attended the B legendary training, I think we will be recognized. And if, so we can all stand up on stage and get a certificate. So.
I'm really busy.
It's all day long.
Oh, yeah, I'm super.
Well, okay, then, um, I just wanted to make you aware of it, I will share it out with you just so you're, so you know, but we probably will get some kind of. Also, on the same note, you know, we had talked after our training that we would not, or at least the administration and I had talked about not. Investing in the continued paying for the continuing coaching from B legendary. Somehow the state now is willing to pay for the first year of continuing coaching, which was a, was it eight or ten thousand dollars? So, so we, the three of us said, well, why, why wouldn't we? And but we'll, we'll, I'll have them do more research and see if, um, they think they can find value in that. Which would, I think, would be, involve a lot of the, the agenda and the advance notice and the, the, the. Consent agenda, the time, how much time we're spending at meetings, talking about, uh, student achievement and so on, which would not have a lot of that at this board meeting, but we've done really. But this was, this is a special. The annual meeting, um, taken longer than I thought, but we've gotten through a lot of things. Uh, with that, then our regular meeting in August would be scheduled for the seventeenth. However, uh, we do need to meet. And approve the budget to be submitted to the county.
Preliminary.
Preliminary budget and tax levy and tax levy, right?
Tax levy meeting, right, when does that have to be done?
Well, that's September. But, but that's what we're submitting to the county too, is our budget as well as our tax.
Certificate of.
Yeah. And that it's submitted in August so that the tax, the estimated tax, real estate tax documents can be prepared and sent out to the taxpayers. Who can then come to our hearing and tell us, oh, it's too much. For all of the tax entities, so we'll have, so we do need to meet before August the tenth, on or before August the tenth.
I think we, last meeting, we actually scheduled it for August eighth, because I already have it on my phone. Tuesday, August eighth, that's what we're starting.
Okay, could you join virtually or?
No.
Okay. If we changed it to the tenth, it doesn't matter. Well, and hopefully Veronica will be able to be here, otherwise we'll still have a forum, the three of us. And that will be, well, do we want to call that, I think maybe we should call that, should that be a special meeting? Because, uh, we want to talk about. Are we wanting to make this our regular meeting? I don't know, that would be.
Well, the special, wow.
Make it our regular meeting.
Regular would be here.
Eight, eight, Tuesday at seven, eight AM, okay. Um, then our September meeting would be the twenty-first.
Wait, no, we're going to go to Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then, right?
At seven AM, I'm being at seven. Fifteen, no, twenty-second, the third, third Friday.
Third Friday is fifteen.
Oh, you're right, I had, yeah, got it, fifteen.
That'll be our, uh, that'll be like our practice month, because you said.
There's, uh, there's probably no way in that you're going to get the meeting, the information two weeks in advance, because I don't see it has to come on up first, but.
Look, there's a.
A holiday.
Um, also, we will need to schedule, probably schedule our hearing.
Our tax hearing.
Tax hearing on that day after. Yeah, my point.
Glad she's on that side. Okay, we'll check and see where the hearing is.
We're getting silly.
But just wait till the night.
Yeah. Okay, so that's our summary of board. Okay, so that's our summary, a board retreat this evening at six thirty, a regular August meeting at seven AM on Tuesday, the eighth, Sheila Nagel not available, and then regular meeting September fifteenth, that's a Friday at seven AM. Alright, is there anything else for the good of the order? Thank you for this lengthy meeting, um, thank, we always thank, now Jordan's gone, but on behalf of the board, thank you to Greg and to Jordan for their diligent work this summer and through here up to the fall. I'm, thanks to Larry for being here, um, with that, I'll be calling the meeting at nine fifty five.
Well, we're actually in Larry's office, that's.